Okay. Good evening. This is the April 18th, 2019 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, meeting in town council chambers. It is now 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's just come to the commission. Please introduce yourselves, starting on my right.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Ann Ambrosi, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman. Walisi, secretary.
Will Agresta, planning and zoning administrator.
Scott Schatz, I'm town engineer.
Rick Schultz, town plater.
Sarah Stradler, community secretary.
Okay, and Ryan, you're seated for tonight's meeting. We have no organizational or administrative matters. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five, general appointments. GA 2019-02, 10 and 36 Main Street, proposed retail development.
For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. With me here this evening is Ray Sullivan from the Sullivan Architectural Group and Rob Dunbar, a longtime resident of Monroe, who's going to be developer on this project. We're really excited to be here tonight to kind of give the commission just a very preliminary introduction for a project that we're just starting to get into at 10 and 36 Main Street. So, just to orient everybody, the site's located just north of the town line with Trumbull off of Route 25. The former Vichy Vitramont facility, located in this location here, the Vichy building was demolished in 2013. There's a vacant lot to the north of that. This is 10 Main Street. This is 36 Main Street. Victoria Drive, the private road that accesses Swiss Army, is just to the north of the site. So, it's almost, so it has a frontage along Main Street and Victoria Drive. So, this site's been before the commission in the past. Zone change was approved in maybe 2013 or 14 to allow for, to change it to B2. There were some conceptual master plans that were kind of presented to the commission over the years. This is one of them, and it was somewhat of a traditional retail center. Large parking lot out front, collection of buildings, but much more traditional from a retail standpoint. And I wanted to show you this because I wanted to talk to the commission about how this plan has evolved over the years and how the current developer, Mr. Rob Dunbar, has a vision that he wants to bring to this site and bring to this part of Monroe. And we're kind of excited to talk through that. So, this is a preliminary site plan rendering of what we're working on now and hoping to bring to the commission and bring to the community. Still referred to as the shops at Victoria Place. This site is, or this, this plan provides approximately 115,000 square feet of retail and restaurant use. Access can be provided off of Victoria Drive and Main Street. You know, we've tried to design this with a, with a collection of, a collection of buildings and a site layout that really provides a unique shopping experience and can bring a whole different level of, of retail shopping experience to the community. You know, right in, right out entrance off of, off of Main Street will bring you down towards, into the site. This collection of buildings here has been designed to have parking right out front, very large sidewalks, opportunity for potential patio seating for potential restaurants, parking in front of these buildings and large sidewalks to provide planters and landscaping elements. A traditional larger retail building, somewhat of an anchor here, and then some additional ancillary locations for some additional retail and things like that. This is just a preliminary introductory, introduction and formal discussion. I do want to introduce Ray Sullivan off to talk a little bit about what we're thinking from a site design standpoint, show you some ideas from an architectural concept, and then answer any questions the commission may have. Just space bar.
Yep. Thanks. Good evening. For the record, my name is Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. I'm located at 155 Broad Street on the Milford Green over in Milford. If it would please the commission, I can hand out some hard copies of this, if you'd like.
Sure. Give them to Will.
I think there's seven copies. So, thank you, Kevin, for that introduction. So, Robert's main focus, you know, from day one, has been to create more of a village retail shopping experience. As Kevin showed the previous example, which is typical of most shopping centers, you know, most of the buildings are pushed to the back or to the side, and there's a maximum number of parking spaces in the middle, which most, you know, most retailers prefer. So, as we begin to three-dimensionalize this, you know, our, our thought was, we'd really like to break the scale down. We'd like to have the patrons enter the site and, in many cases, have shopping on both sides, so it looks like you're on a smaller Main Street and a small New England town. So, again, this is just a preliminary, and we haven't even studied in detail the full site, but what we did was, was we made the main entrance, you know, off of 25, a soft curve. And off that soft curve, we put buildings on both sides. And in front of the buildings, we put courtyards and plazas, and we want to make those exterior spaces, you know, engaging and complementary to one another. So, so when the, you know, the patron, you know, drives in, he's got a much lower scale, much more, again, of, you know, a village concept of, of shopping. So, you know, we chose to use, you know, very traditional shapes. You know, you know, many retail shopping centers are contemporary today, and they look great. You know, you know, there's a lot of materials out there. There's, there's a lot of flat surfaces with stucco and different applied materials to it, you know, changing roof shapes. We thought we could engage the street, engage the patron, particularly in this location. You know, if we really, you know, played off the New England flair. So, we've got some very traditional shapes. As you drive through this soft curve, you know, we're not hitting any long walls. You know, you know, all the walls are kind of sawtoothed to the, to the, to the road. There aren't any long elevations. They break. You know, as the, as they break, they change architectural shape. So, as you, as you enter this main, you know, you can see there's going to be restaurants, so we've got to kind of define space. We don't want to enclose it. We don't want to, you know, hide it, but, but it does want to be defined for exterior shopping. We've got these two complementary plazas on each side. You know, we have a, a retail look to the building, you know, with very traditional shapes, with, you know, gable roofs, dormers, cupolas. You know, we've got, you know, an old-fashioned light fixtures with colored banners, with, you know, with signage. And we've got a lot of covered walkway. You know, we think that's important. You know, you get a day like today, it's not a great day, you know, you'd still like to be shopping and moving around. And so, you know, many of the retail storefronts, you know, you know, you know, has a covered walkway in front of it. We, you know, we would introduce and standardize signage so that, you know, that stays consistent and within the same design quality of the, you know, overall shopping center. You know, if you drove partway in and looked back at the building that's in the middle, that's what you'd see. So, we want to take some of that hardscape plaza area, break it down with softer landscape areas, provide, you know, benches for patrons to rest. You know, this is a good image where, where we really hope to create almost like a lifestyle center where, where, you know, you might be in one store, but you're, you're so inclined to walk across the street to the other store, you know, because you actually feel like you're a little bit more downtownish. And, and we hope the, the stores, you know, play up one another and that the, you know, and the patrons use them all. But, you know, again, you could see some of the hints of the architecture as it's developing, you know, into this, you know, very traditional scene. So, if we, if we take just that area of the site, and, and there's other areas of the site we have to spend more time on, we're just getting started on the detail of this. But again, you've got that soft curve. You know, you've got complementary plazas on both sides. You've got head-on parking into that. So, there's plenty of parking, you know, in the facility, but, you know, it's almost like old-fashioned Main Street. You pull right up front, you know, you can, you can walk in the door. You know, you can see the defined areas for the, for the restaurant shopping or the landscaping. There are, there will be, you know, textured walkway connections in between, you know, plazas and buildings so that we get a protected defined area for patrons to circulate through the site. And hopefully, if they've got some, some texture there, it can act as a rumble strip to slow the, you know, the, you know, the parking down as well. This is just an image where, where we just began to study, you know, what this wants to look like. You know, we can have, on the, on the lower side, you know, it might be hard to see in this, this image as it, as it's a little bit lighter, but, you know, you can have a, you know, a tan shingle, you know, with an asphalt shingle roof that, that's forming a, you know, a mansard, you know, that, that hides the, the main flat roof behind it. We've got large storefront glass. You know, we would accent the bottom of the building, you know, with masonry, and in this case, it's stone. You know, if you go up to the top image, that might be a standing seam, you know, with a clapboard siding. And, and, and that base may be, you know, a low brick veneer. But again, you know, we would have, you know, decorative light fixtures at the columns, and we would have an organized, you know, signage banner. So, you know, in, in, in short, we're really trying to maybe, it's not a new concept, but, but, you know, you know, Robert really wants to create something that is a little bit warmer, a little bit more local downtown retail shopping as opposed to like a, like a, a, a larger facility with a sea of parking in front of it. So, we, we really want to create a, a series of experiences, you know, in the shops, you know, and, and create good indoor and outdoor spaces that, that hopefully will, will enhance the experience for all. So, again, it's kind of a brief introduction of the concept of where we're trying to go with this. We've got further to develop. You know, already, we've picked up spots where we want to kind of continue this village retail and turn it around the corners of some of the buildings and begin to engage some of the other buildings, but, you know, I, you know, I think we've got a good start on, on, on the, on the basic concept, which has helped solidify the site plan. So, I'll take any questions if they're ready.
Just, pretty much with everything on 25, the concern would just be, obviously, eventually a traffic study on the coming out.
Yes.
I like, you know, using the light, but the other current lands is the amount of concern, but besides that, I very much like this idea.
Thank you.
You know, I, I like the design that you came up with, and I think this would be a, a great thing for the town. You know, we're looking to work for you on this, and this is the kind of design you're going to go for. And like he said, like, we have to worry about traffic, but I think there was a traffic study done over there that would accommodate this, but, you know, at one time, we weren't right.
Yeah, we, we, we're obviously very familiar with the corridor. We've analyzed this portion of Route 25 several times over several different project iterations, and we have a good handle on that. You know, we're confident that we're going to be able to design, you know, from a traffic standpoint and make sure we mitigate our impacts. This will be part of, this will have a DOT component, as it would be part of the overall OSTA certifiable area, which includes the bounds of Victoria Drive, Swiss Army towards the back, and then the, the former Walmart parcel. So, it would, it would have an additional layer permitting from a traffic standpoint with, with the DOT as well.
Yeah, I think this is great. I've been waiting for something like this in Monroe for a long time, so I'm happy to see this. My only comment is that I would pay attention to the, I, if I recall, the grade drops quite a bit there from the road, so, you know, pay attention to, we're probably going to see a lot of roof area. So, I would just, just note that, you know, that should be considered. You know, as you drive by, we don't want to see a lot of roofs and a lot of rooftop equipment, mechanical equipment on the roof.
Yeah, from a, okay.
But I was just going to say, I mean, you know, Kevin hasn't finished the, all the grading yet, but we propose a substantial amount of fill, to the point where, you know, we think that site is going to be, you know, five, eight feet below 25. You know, it won't be 25 feet down. So, so, yeah, we're not going to get it up to eye level, but, but we're going to get it up there, and I understand your point about not wanting to look down on it, which was one of our concerns as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay. First, I just want to start off, general appointments, everything is, is non-binding. You know, this is an informal discussion, so I just wanted to make that clear going forward. I, I think the, the concept is great. The property is zoned for this use, so that's, you know, one hurdle that you don't have to, to worry about. The right in, right out, I think, is, would be a requirement on that south driveway anyway, so I'm glad to see that you're, you know, you're looking that way. You know, I saw on your renderings that you've added some, between this drawing and the second drawing, you've added some islands in the parking area, so we don't have those big, large expanses of pavement, so that's, you know, that's good. Overall, I, I think the, the concept is good.
Great.
Anybody from staff have any comments they think?
We don't really have.
Okay.
That was it. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an intro and let you know what we're working on and what may be coming down the pike in the next few months.
We appreciate the, the opportunity to see what you're planning, and it looks good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you guys.
Hey, we're going to move on into public hearings. Instructions for a public hearing. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and to speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Peaks will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Excuse me. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if any answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between, between speakers and audience. The commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote of demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel in need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, the first item on our list is item number six, SUB 2019-01, file number 1264C, 104 Elm Street, residential and farming district one. It's a subdivision application or re-subdivision application, and it has been postponed by the applicant to May 2nd. Next up is item number seven, SEP 2018-12, file number 1607A, 575 Monroe Turnpike, special exception permit application to permit a, a child daycare center used within an existing one-story building, including parking, stormwater drainage, and other site and building improvements. Applicant Antonio Ferrera, property owner Carolyn Green. This is a hearing that is reconvened from April 4th. What do we have for exhibits?
New exhibits, exhibit number 35, planting plan by the applicant, and exhibit 36, updated AOT, PMZ comments, and is all.
Okay, for the applicants.
Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Russo, Russo Rizio LLC, offices at One Post Road in Fairfield. Here on behalf of the applicant, Antonio Ferrera, and the property owner Carolyn Green for the property of 575 Monroe Turnpike. If the commission remembers, a couple weeks ago, we continued this hearing for the special exception permit to produce a landscape plan, which we have done. We submitted it in last week to zoning, and subsequent to that, we actually received some more comments from, from Will, and we've actually started incorporating those comments into our landscape plan. So, the, the plan that's up here on the screen is actually started incorporating some of Will's comments. We've added a number of shrubs and plantings and trees in several locations. First, over here in the front, corner of the building, and then in these two locations by the walkway. We've also proposed some native shrubs and, and annual planting bed around the proposed sign. We had to be cognizant of sightlines, but also the, the galley system that's underneath the parking lot area here, it limited us in where we could locate some of the plantings, but people like Bill Kenny's office were able to put in three dogwood trees here and then a variety of ground cover and shrubs and plantings. So, this is landscape plan as requested. Certainly believe it'll be an enhancement, certainly over the current conditions there, and that it's in conformity with your regulations. This plan incorporates Will's changes. That's, I believe, really the only reason we left, we left the hearing open for that. I'm happy to answer any questions about that, about this landscape plan. But otherwise, that's, that's what we're doing.
All right, Ryan. No question. Yeah, it's not on this drawing, it's on the other drawings. Commissioner Ambrosi has a question about the light pole. What are you doing with the light pole?
Light pole? What are you planning to do with the light pole?
The light pole that is right, that's to be located right here. That light pole?
You guys see it in the setback?
So, it is at the, the 30-foot setback. Let me see, let me pull up the sight. So, I zoom in here. You can see the indication for the 30-foot setback that goes right to here. The light pole is proposed just outside that setback, right there on the corner.
The light pole's in the driveway.
The light pole is in the parking area. I talked with Mike Paterno, the engineer from Huntington Company, about possibly extending this curb to include that light pole. And if we were to do that, we, we could do it a number of ways. We could either kind of put in a teardrop around this light pole that would surround it with a little, with some landscaping, or we could just extend the curb as a whole here. And let me see here, I think I have, one second. See, that was the turning radius plan that showed that where that light pole is located, we would still be able to pull in a vehicle here into this space, but we also... What we can also do is extend this curb all the way out here and encompass the light pole. It would be outside the setback, and it would cover the light pole. What would require us to do is push back spaces six, seven, and eight, two feet to get the 24 feet. Turning radius lower.
So, is that something that you can, you can work out with the staff? Either the light pole?
I, I believe so.
Really? Should find another place for the light pole? You're just exasperating again the problem that you got better with the transition with the handicap space, with the dipping down of the parking spaces. It's really a, not a very good design.
Well, it doesn't affect, if, if these, if these spaces were over here, it would affect the turning radius of these spaces, but because they're farther down here, I don't think they'll have any impact on these spaces. I mean, the, the backing out of this space will not be affected at all, and it shouldn't affect this at all either. And it talked about the fact that the dumpster was probably too large, that it could be reduced, so the size of this pad could be further reduced, and I think significantly reduced. And so, you know, and we, what Mike showed on this plan was that even with the current size of the dumpster, that this, that this car could back up safely and exit.
Is that the only place you could put the light pole? Or could you move it somewhere?
I think the issue would be, we're limited, we, we couldn't place it anywhere up here. We, we run into the setback issue, and so then it would be, it would have to be over on this side, and to get the light pole to appropriately light what it needs to over in this area, the parking area, would be difficult. So, really, this is the best location for the light pole to, to light the parking area.
You just don't, I don't want the light pole in the driveway. We're going to have to figure that out somehow.
So, I think this is, this is definitely something we could do. Just extend the curb and push these spaces back. You're only pushing them back two feet.
If you'd be willing to, as a condition of approval, make, make whatever changes need to be made if you coordinate with staff on the placement of that light pole.
Yes, absolutely, chair.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as the light pole, you could always maybe need two smaller light poles instead of one. And that's something to consider as well. My only question was regarding the lawn area, or in the back, there's a fenced area, which I think is, is that for a playground area?
That is the playground area, yes.
Is that, that's just going to be lawn, or is there?
It's just going to be, it's, it's just going to be lawn, yes.
And is there any handicap accessible ramp or anything like that on the, or is that, you need that for, for accessing the building at all?
I don't believe so, no. We don't.
It's not looking around. Is that a door?
Okay, yeah, the, there is an entrance over here that I believe, that there's a door that's right here that's leveled with the, with the grade there, so that would be the access.
Is it floor plan, Chris?
Do I have the floor plan?
Isn't there a lift or something?
You know, I don't know if I have it already. It actually might be on your, is it on your...
Using your stick or mine?
I'm using my stick. I believe they made it so it's, so it's that there would be a level access there.
Is there another sheet with that? Is there more than one sheet in there?
No, there's not on that one. Should definitely have been in the paper, it's right there. Just trying to see which.
Okay, according to the floor plan I'm looking at, if you go back to the plan, Chris.
Into the cipher?
Yeah. So the at-grade entrance is the closest door right there from the parking lot.
Right.
That goes into a level of the interior of the building, which is just the side to the right. And it meanders to the black, the back playroom, which has an at-grade entrance out. And there is an upper level, with the upper level, there is a wheelchair lift in the floor plan that brings you up to the upper level. So that's how they're doing the A D A. Okay?
Thank you, thanks.
All right, Mr. Russo, you have a, I'm assuming you have a copy of Will's list dated April fifteenth. This is the one you said you've already made some adjustments to the plan based on.
Yes.
I just want to run through this list real quick with you. Okay, he had, he's asking for some additional plantings. You have under the tree in the northeast corner of the parking lot, that you, I think you have.
Yep.
That's the front one. Under the tree in the front southwest corner, you have along the walkway from the parking lot to the first door.
Yes.
And along the curb line from the first parking space on both sides of the entrance. Is that the area?
They have one.
Okay. Just to get to change the size designation for the plantings to conform to our
Yes.
regulations. The dumpster, you're going to make, work that out with staff about whatever size dumpster you're going to need and make an appropriate size enclosure. The light pole issue, you work out to the satisfaction of staff?
Yes, sir.
The loading zone. There's a note here to remove the notation about the loading zone.
Well, they're showing one that doesn't really work, and they're asking for a waiver for the loading zone. So my recommendation is that you just, if you give them the waiver, we're going to take off the drawing that shows.
How does the commission feel about leaving the loading zone? Am I right? That's mine. Okay, waive the loading zone. Item D, again, these are just some notations and things on the plans. Show the dimensions for the setback and landscape buffer. Correct the width of the A D A van space. Revise the zoning table. Make some additions to the zoning table. Details for your exterior lights. Playground fence, playground equipment. So those details should be on the plan, not just a separate handover, okay?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend to staff that if that light pole is going to be anywhere near traffic, that we at least have it come up two feet and have it reinforced with concrete, so when it gets hit, and it probably will get hit, it'll snap off. So those are all agreeable to you?
Yes, Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions? The staff have any other comments?
Just before the public comments, my bond recommendation is twenty-six hundred dollars for site stabilization and restoration. If walks, frontage walks are required, then it would be bumped up to thirty-one hundred.
I'm going to call the commission right now. What's the commission's opinion on sidewalks along the front of this property?
I think it should have it.
You think it should have it?
Yeah.
Leon?
I think, I, I mean, there's no way of connecting it to the swamp on either side. So I think I'm good with that having it.
Yeah, I agree that even though we're trying to increase our sidewalks in town, I really think that this would be a senseless requirement for the property owners, because it is swamp on either side. Would that be developed?
And that can't be developed, even in that required.
All right, so we're going to waive the sidewalks.
Okay, so the recommendation was twenty-six hundred. And I just want the commission to understand that what I'm doing there for the site stabilization and restoration bond is I look at the entire disturbance area, and I subtract out the wetland, upland review area, which was eleven thousand in this case. But you should be aware that I'm doing that, because you're two separate agencies, two separate bonds, two separate processes, and both commissions have the right to require full bonding. I just want you to understand, in an effort to kind of work with applicants, I kind of subtract the two out. But if there is ever any problem, that would mean that the town would have to go after two different bonds, which has two different processes, two different costs.
Understood.
All right, so that's the bond.
So Russo, the bond recommendation from the town engineer is suitable?
Yes, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, and then the rest of my stuff is just house cleaning, I can work with that.
Okay. Well, let's see if anyone from the public has any questions or comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing I did forget, sorry. And I wanted to ask the applicant, on the dumpster, we had asked that you made the dumpster smaller, and I see that you made the length of it smaller. But the depth of it is really the main problem pulling out of this space. I don't know if you want to go back to that photo?
Scott, that was one of the items that, when I read through the list, the applicant is going to work that out with staff as a condition of approval?
Yeah, I could do that, I mean, it's a minimal change.
I'm going to shrink the size of the dumpster.
Yeah, okay, so we're good.
Because that could be impacted by any potential changes in the light pole also.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right.
You'll work that all out. Anything else?
That's it?
Sure?
Yeah, sorry.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Lee Hossler?
Lee Hossler, two-seven-two Stanley Road. It appears that you're getting close to a decision. I like, I would hope that you'd be able to do deliberation and close this. I'd like to see this, apparently there's a need for this in town, and I think this would be a good spot for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Mr. Russo.
Chairman, if you'll just indulge me to run through the standards for a special exception permit, since we're wrapping it up, I'd just like to get on the record that we believe we conform to the standards under regulations. We believe the location and size of the use and the nature and intensity of it is appropriate for the neighborhood and its location on Monroe Turnpike, across from a B-one zone. Obviously, we had a sense of discussion during the zone change application, but we believe the B-one zone is appropriate at this site, across from Steve's office building in the old Goodwill building. We believe it's consistent with the plan of conservation development. We talked a lot about that during the zone change application, but this was an area that was targeted for commercial development. And we believe that the location, the nature, and the height of the building is appropriate. And the landscaping, it's remaining basically as it is as an existing building, and that's not changing, it's conforming with a lot of the homes that are around it. The operation of the proposed use is not, we don't believe is objectable due to noise, fumes, smoke, dust, vibration, glare intensity, or flashing of lights, unless you find loud kids, to be objectionable. Otherwise, I think we are okay on that. We provide safe sanitary sewage disposal. There was a lot of back and forth with the health department regarding the septic system to design this particular system. We believe that the parking area will be adequate for this use, it conforms to your regulations, and will not affect any of its adjoining, abutting properties, which are vacant land and were likely to remain so. We believe we've incorporated at least as much as we could to this point of the town staff's comments. This approval will be contingent on getting the appropriate approvals from state bodies to operate the daycare center. And this use will not require any additional stress on public facilities. It will not be serviced by a school bus. They will do their own plowing. So we'll put no burden on the town. So for those reasons, we respectfully request your approval of this application. Thank you very much for your feedback in helping us to improve this plan, and we look forward to bringing this to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Close it. Hearing is closed, seven forty-four P M. Okay, next up is item number eight. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. In accordance with Connecticut general statute, section eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, seven Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P M. Or soon thereafter, concerning the following. S U B two thousand nineteen dash oh two, file number one-two-six-six-C, five Bridge Road, Cessar Map one fifty-four, lot three dash one, residential and farming district one. Subdivision application for a two-lot, single-family residential subdivision for property consisting of approximately two-point-one-three acres, located at the northeast intersection of Bridge Road and Roosevelt Drive, Route thirty-four. Owner applicant, Bridge Road LLC, care of John Kimble, member. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, subdivision retention application, attachments. Exhibit two, six plan set. Exhibit three, adjacent municipality referral notice. Exhibit four, subdivision report from Monroe Watkins Commission. Exhibit five, A O T P N Z comments. Exhibit six, A O T town engineer comments. Exhibit seven, certified mail receipts regarding a butter notice. Exhibit eight, A O T comments by the health department, that is all.
And for the applicant?
Bill Carbone, Scott Yorkland Associates. I have a professional engineer license in the state of Connecticut. I'd like to go through basically the location of where we are. This is Route thirty-four. Here, this is Route one-eleven, going down to it. This is Lake Store. And right in here is Bridge Road. And we're proposing a two-lot subdivision, the house here and a house here, both of them overlooking the lake. But off the steep property that's located in this area, it's up a little bit more. You can see where our development ends, and then where the deep slope comes in through here. It is, as currently proposed, there is a house here with a driveway going out on Bridge Road. So this is quite a lot two, just for clarity. This is the original lot that was subcut a few years ago. This is lot one, this is two, and this is three. Lot three will also have this access off of Bridge Road, which we will discuss later. We received comments from both the town planner and the town engineer regarding this, and I'd like to go over and provide comments to those. First, I'll go through Will's comments first. His first comment is that there should be a wetland delineation. That was not available at the time this was submitted to planning and zoning, but it was done as part of the wetlands hearing, and that information will be added to the plans. There was a, as Will said, a referral letter from I W C to the commission. The third one is a lengthy problem, and that is the FEMA designation of this area. There has been much back and forth at wetlands, and again, here. And there is a problem in the delineation of the wetlands, of the flood zones in this area. Primarily, if you go to the original documents and that map, they list the floodway as an area along the perimeter of the lake, as would be expected. It ranges from elevation two-oh-one-oh-eight in this area to about two-fourteen, one-fourteen, right before the bridge. All our development is above elevation one-forty-two. So we're some thirty feet higher than the floodway in this area. But it still presents a problem in the, the map is there, it's on record, and it may create funding problems when they go to get a bank loan on this thing, because it's an error. So as Scott has recommended, we will file a L O M A for this area. We had correspondence this morning, or this afternoon, from the people at FEMA. Chris Marsinski, is that?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay. And he is saying that he acknowledges the problem in this area, and he suggests filing a L O M A to take care of this, and he has other documents. So I think in resolution of this, Scott, Tracy Lewis, who is the surveyor on this, and myself, will have to work out the legal ease of the flood areas. But in no case do they affect the development. As I say, we're some thirty feet higher than the lake, and therefore, the floodway. So this will have to be worked out. Will has asked for an assessment of the property's lot quality. This refers to if a lot can be used for building purposes. We believe that the plans that we have provided show that it can be used, but we will draft a statement to go with this application to have that in here. Also, section six-point-six refers, of the zoning regulations, referred to flood damage control. As I said, the elevations of the floodway range from one-oh-eight to one-oh-four, and we're some thirty feet high above it. So we don't see that there is any possibility of flood damage from a FEMA standpoint. We have contacted the D E P regarding their natural diversity database. It shows a area... It shows a area from the very large scale that it is. It appears to be the water area of Lake Zor. Around that, they always have a 500-foot area that is encompassed, which encompasses this site. We have contacted DEP, and we will get information regarding the state and federal species of significant concern. These will be made part of the record. Number six. This gets to the street access on a dead-end street. Zoning regulations say you can have a maximum of 12 and a minimum of four lots on a dead-end street. Lot 2 would be the 11th lot, and Lot 3 would be the 12th lot. However, and it says that you have to have frontage on the street that you have service from. This does not conform with this regulation. We have this going down here. We do not have sufficient frontage here. I want to get to the next one. How do I get back to this? Which one do you want down? This is an alternative layout that we are suggesting that will correct the problem we have on street frontage. Lot 2 remains exactly as it is. Lot 3, however, what we're proposing on doing is taking the driveway and going out to Route 34. This driveway is approximately 100 feet from Bridge Road and 100 feet from the northbound Route 111. There is more than ample frontage on Route 34. The service is provided from Route 34, and the line of sight at this point is 800 feet in one direction and 1,000 in the other, so there's no problem with line of sight. So we will modify these plans to incorporate this driveway configuration. This is the edge of pavement of Route 34. This is the street line. It's approximately 40 feet from the edge of pavement to here. This very wide right-of-way was done by the state so that they could build a berm in this area opposite Route 34. They are trying to stop any vehicles, in particular trucks, that would go into this lot and orally exhort. There was a, I believe it was a dump truck, that was coming down the hill on 34 and wound up over in this area, so they provided this berm. Now, our driveway location is to the east of the edge of the berm. As I say, we're 100 feet from there, so the berm kind of tapers off in this area so we can bring the driveway in here and not interfere with these poles and that. So as part of the response to these comments, we will be proposing this configuration for the driveways. The comment seven is regarding the subdivision plans. Most of these are calling for details which are to be added, and we will do that. For example, the wetland boundary delineation. He also has a comment regarding the required open space. What we are proposing in this instance is to pay a fee in lieu of. The reason is, well, first of all, there's no surrounding open space in this area, so we can't really tie it into anything. Also, if we provided open space in this area, which is out of our development area, it is extremely steep, and we don't believe usable in here. So what we are proposing is to pay a fee in lieu of, which will require us to get an assessment of the property and so on and derive the fee. Comment eight is also regarding the subdivision map, and a note that has to be added to this, which we will do. They say in particular, adding notation referencing the town of Monroe flood development permit. We will, but what the note is going to say is that the flood development permit is not required since the proposed buildings are reasonably safe from flooding, which is the comment from the regulations. As I said, we're some 30 feet above it, so we don't believe there is a flood hazard, and that will be noted on the plans. Note 10 gets into the site plans. The first one is there should be a location map that's shown on the title sheet. Street standards per this section require possible widening. A parcel is to be deeded to the town for any possible expansion of Bridge Road. We have chucked this out in this area to provide, at least on our side, 25 feet of right-of-way to allow the widening of the street if the town should need that sometime in the future. There's comments regarding the zoning compliance table. They will be modified accordingly. With this second alternative, these comments are regarding the well radius. The Connecticut health code requires a 75-foot well radius. The town requires a 100-foot radius. With this modification to the driveway, the wells, or at least this well, will be modified to provide that 100-foot radius. They will be shown on the final plans. There was a call for a drainage report. However, there is no drainage on this development, so there is no report. There are two groundwater recharge galleries proposed, and the calculations for their sizing is shown on Sheet D1. There is, explain the plans to include the required street trees. Well, there is no public road to be done with this, therefore there are no street trees. There is no reconstruction of Bridge Road with this, so again, there's no street trees. Is a comment regarding the, a separate erosion and sediment control from the subdivision improvements, separate from the on-lot ones. Well, there are no subdivision improvements. These are two lots on existing roads, so there is no separate erosion control requirements or anything shown on here anyhow. As I said, we have two. This is the alternate plan that we're looking at here. There is a ground recharge facility here and another one here. They are on both sets of plans and will continue to be there. Also, with the elimination of the driveway, the long driveway on the, from Bridge Road required a bump out here for parking adjacent to the right-of-way. With this new configuration, and we had an easement there, that easement has been eliminated. The parking is now in this area, which is within the lot 3 property. There's a call for details on driveway lip and line of sight. Of course, these line of sights now change with the alternate, but they will be provided in the plans. The driveway which meet the minimum standards, and they will continue on the alternate plan. One of the last comments was the location of the trees on Lot 2. There was a lengthy discussion at the wetlands commission as to where the LOD should be and the silk fence and other facilities. It was, as I say, between the applicant and the commission, we have decided this is the proper area. There was at one time, this road that, or it's the driveway now, but it was a road that came up through here and serviced some cabins that were in this area in the '30s and '40s that overlooked the lake. The remnants of that driveway or cleared area is right in here, so what we have done is put all of these facilities at the northerly end of that driveway. This also happens to be the beginning of the steep slope areas in here, so we are proposing a split rail fence to go all along both of these lots to demarcate between the usable area of the lots and this area that is proposed to be untouched per the wetlands regulations. Sediment controls will be in there, too. Well, this then becomes the lot, and we don't see any reason to move that location. Wetlands was happy with it, and I don't think there's any requirement as to the size of a person's lot. Comment 10 are, again, asking for details of the existing road. We will prepare a cross-section of it, but that road is existing, and we have no reason to change it. He asked for a construction sequence that, for the proposed subdivision improvements. As I stated, there are no subdivision improvements, only lot improvements, so the sequencing will remain as it is. He asked for our sequencing to be expanded related to the requirements of administrative permits, inspections, and closeout of the set permits. This came up several years ago, and we asked for, these are town requirements, not ours. We asked for, okay, what do you want? What is the administrative sequencing? We have never received that information. If the staff provides it to us, we will add it to the plans. Again, he asked for details on the street tree installation. There are no street trees. The apron detail will be added. Utilities trench comes from the utility companies, and they will be, once we get them from the utility companies, as a matter of fact, mostly, though, the utilities are coming in overhead, so there won't be any trenching. Going on to the town engineer's comments. Scott has asked for a 25-foot radius at the southeast corner of the lot, which would be right in here. This is normally done when you have a street through, where you don't have that in there and you have two streets. However, since that 25-foot would be back in here and we're some 40 feet away from it, I don't think it's warranted. The Route 34 is 46 feet wide now. It's 47 feet away from the edge of pavement to the right-of-way. They'd have to widen the road to over 90 feet wide for that to have any use. Again, there is question about the improvements of the frontage of Bridge Road. We are not proposing any improvements therefore on that. His item 3 is, again, the flood and how there is a problem with that, which we agree with his comments here and the way to correct it. Now, Scott called for a LOMAR, which is a map of, a letter of map revision. The FEMA said they should use a map of, a letter of map amendment. I don't see exactly, well, those is another one of the details. It has to be worked out between all the parties, and as I said, Tracy Lewis, the surveyor that has begun that process. His comment four, again, deals with the driveway and its exit onto Bridge Road, which the alternate plan will respond to that. Scott goes on to, again, make us aware that the approval is contingent upon a highway modification, now in this case from both the town and the state. The verification of the easement is a moot point since we're not going to need that anymore, and we need a highway encroachment from conduct. He also notes that the bond recommendations will be provided in later, which we agree with. Those are my comments regarding, or my responses to the comments from staff. Just wondering if the commission has any particular concerns for these.
So I know you keep mentioning that it's not going to be site improvements, so you didn't want to do the frontage, but there's nothing there right now, right? They're empty lots?
On the lots?
Yeah.
Well, they're tree, but there's a few cabins.
I mean, you are improving it by putting stuff there, so I think that's what they mean by that, which is why normally we require the additions when you do that improvement, so might be something to talk to staff a little bit further on, whether or not you need to add some of that, but...
Yeah, they kept saying subdivision improvements, which normally is a new road, and, you know, subdivision road with lots coming off of that. We're not doing it, so we really don't have any subdivision improvements as such, but I will be happy to work with them and clarify that.
Thank you.
But you are on existing roads, is what you're saying? It is on existing road?
Yes. Bridge Road is an existing road with currently 10 lots on it, and of course, 34 is a state highway.
But you're adding two more lots to that existing road? So you don't think you have to improve the road?
We are, and with our alternate, we are adding one lot to it.
That's what I'm saying, but you are adding a lot to it. You want a subdivision lot.
Right, and we are within the 12-lot maximum limits, so no, we are not proposing improvements, nor have they called for any.
Okay, and then now you're going to add the driveway out? You're going to put another driveway in?
Up to 34.
You're going to revise that plan?
Yes, and it will be the one that's on, or now it will have that driveway going out there. Everything else, lot lines, other improvements on the lot, all remain the same.
You're going to do a site line study on that driveway?
Yes.
So you plan on leaving this open, right? You plan on leaving this open till you do all that?
Yes.
You want me to? Okay. If I have no other questions, I'll just want to leave for the meeting.
So this is currently one lot, and it's, the address is Route 34?
Bybridge Road.
Brit, oh, so it's currently Bridge Road access?
Correct.
There's no curb cut? There's no driveways? But the address is technically Bridge Road percent?
Yeah, there is, but not formally. This area right in here, which is level, has been used over the years as a staging area, and there is an access driveway coming in here. It was used for a long time when they were constructing this berm in here, in along 34. This was the staging area for that work. So yes, you can, and I think all the staff and I have driven in here to inspect this property, so there is a driveway. There is an access there, but not technically a driveway, not to the town standards anyhow.
Okay, and so you're addressing the frontage issue by locating the other driveway off Route 34?
Correct.
And as far as other, compliance with other regulation requirements like the number of acres or the size? of acres or the size of the lots, that all conforms?
That all conforms, and it will not be changed. None of that will change with the relocation of the driveway. There is a zoning compliance chart on the sheet.
And everything complies, the setbacks for the houses and?
Now, one. One thing Will asked for was a, these recharge facilities are within the setback area, and he wants the calculations, Joe, that it's no more than twenty-five percent of the lot, so that will be added, again, to the compliance charts as Will suggested.
Okay, and my only other question was Scott's comment about the radius at the intersection?
Yes.
What, what is that? I'd like some clarification on that. Is that?
I'm not real hung up on that, but basically, what that is, is when and if they ever widen the road. I mean, it's Route Thirty-Four, conceivably, it could be a median in that area, and they could open it up a little bit. That might also address their safety issue with the intersection. If they ever do improvements like that along here, the road conceivably could come over to here, to the edge of their right-of-way, and if that happens, typically, there's a radius where the town right-of-way meets the state right-of-way, so that if there's a sidewalk or a walking path or utilities, they can go in that area that's uniformly about ten feet off of the pavement. He's correct, at this point, it's pretty far away from the pavement. It, it would just be something that would be put there and for the future if that ever were to happen.
Again, we didn't do it because it would be a ninety-foot-wide Route Thirty-Four on this side. I don't know what, what they would do on the other side. That'd be like a four-lane, six-lane highway.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, so the majority of the items that you read from staff's lists, other than the subdivision improvements, you're in agreement?
Yes, other than where I noted that we weren't doing certain things, that is correct, where they, we felt they were not necessary and.
So is it your intention then to revise these drawings and resubmit?
Yes, and we will also hopefully have a course of action for the flood permit or the flood things. It will not happen within our timeframe because working with FEMA requires a large amount of time, but I believe that if we can all agree that for the process, that we could go ahead from there.
Just a clarification, because I didn't, I talked to him yesterday, and that's, that's where I learned about the LOMA versus Lo, versus the LOMAR that I had indicated, and he indicated to me that they can fast-track it and that the big concern was to get a detailed survey, and I told him that that had already been done. So I talked to Tracy Lewis to get him to submit that as soon as possible, because FEMA told me they could do it within thirty days, which would work with your timing with the public hearing. So that's what I talked to Tracy about. He's going to try to get that in. It's conceivable that it can be resolved before you close it.
The other revisions, how much time do you think you're going to need to complete them?
Well, we could have them done by next Wednesday, which would get us in line for the next hearing. However, there's another outstanding issue, and that is the natural diversity database. We have already sent up the application to DEP, but their timing on response sometimes is lengthy. So again, as I say, I think it is based on the shoreline of the lake, and therefore, we won't be affecting it, at least for the subdivision. So if, if we could proceed without that, that would be fine, but we could have it done by next Wednesday.
Then why don't, why don't we continue this to May second, and if, if we need to postpone it to the following meeting, we can always do that.
That would be fine. I mean, the engineering, the engineering details we can take care of. It's the FEMA and DEP that we have no control.
Okay. All right, any other issues from Scott before I?
Yeah, I got a couple that I think they'll tread lightly on. I mean, in that timeline, we've really got to get the FEMA resolved, so I mean, I don't think that's going to happen by May second, so we can keep moving forward and go, but we're going to need to resolve that. With regards to the realignment of the driveway location, which is fine, is there really a need to continue to strip down Bridge Road? Why don't we just absorb most of that into the other lot?
You mean have a common driveway?
No. You still have the strip coming down to Bridge Road, which implies to a future owner that maybe you can go out, get onto Bridge Road, and we're going to revisit all those issues that don't comply. Wouldn't it be easier just to kind of put portion of that into the other lot so that we don't have that issue?
Each of these lots has a, an adequate, but they're like 1.08 acres of lots, so this lot from?
You could pick it up in the corner where the driveway turns and it gives a better angle for the driveway. You can make it work.
Over in here?
Yeah.
Or down.
Or, or down by the, the steep slope. I mean, there's plenty of opportunities for you to pick up the area so they stays, stay compliant.
In, we would have to do it from here down, and it's going to create a lot line, but these are situated there for minimums, or to be outside the setbacks and the other requirements. I will look at.
You could even take a little bit off, just so it doesn't hit Bridge Road.
That would be fine.
You can probably make that, like I said, you can find a way.
Yeah, and again, this area is treed from there, and we can make a condition that those trees not be removed.
Right, that's fine.
Which would also limit the access, but again, if you're just talking about a ten-foot strip here, yes, we can make that up somewhere else.
Yeah.
We'll look at that.
Okay. With regards to the trees, the street tree issue, yes, it talks about when you create a street, but it also kind of contemplates the fact of, you know, your plans are showing a limited disturbance in the back. I don't see a limited disturbance in the front. So if you were to clear-cut the frontage, you've basically eliminated what existing street trees are on those streets, so if you're going to do that, that's when the street tree issue kind of changes the course. I don't think that's your intent.
Right.
But if you could show, you know, the retention of the trees along the street front, that would forego any issue about concern about not having the street trees on the road.
Right, now, don't forget, all along Thirty-Four, for both of these lots, there's a forty-foot bumper strip in there already.
But we don't control DOT.
So the only thing we're dealing with is Bridge Road, and we have a driveway here, and, well, other than what exists there as a driveway, this is treed, so that's with our provision.
This is John Kimball, fourteen twenty eight, we're at Turnpike. Yeah, just because we ended up with the same catch twenty-two on the Stone Castle subdivision, and I, there's ambiguity on the street tree issue. I propose I'll go out with the tree warden, who's the representative of the commission, and we'll flag certain trees, and we'll show them on the plan so that we're clear that if we cut those trees down, that they meet the adequate definition of a street tree, and that if we cut those trees down, we'll replace them with a street tree.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay?
So with regards to the open space requirement, again, it's not really a selection of the applicant, although you can propose, but your proposal is just fine, so you need to make a little narrative and explain why there's no reason for it, and the commission would have to decide whether that's appropriate or not. With regards to the, the street, okay, the standards, which I didn't spell out, I noted the reference to the standards when you're providing access on an existing street. There are provisions in there that lets the commission require bringing the street up to standards if it so deems that necessary or warranted or important. You kind of glossed over that, so I think the reason for the analysis of the existing street condition is to understand how far it is from the, the standards, so the commission can make an informed decision as to whether anything is necessary or not. So if you can look at that when you make your revision, that would be helpful.
Yeah, just a clarification on that, the intersection and Bridge Road is very deficient in terms of the width, so when you have vehicles turning in, there's not a lot of room to make the radius in, and, and so this would be an opportunity to get the intersection and the roadway addressed in a fashion that would make it safer.
What does, what does the, the fact that this is a private road and not a town road?
It's a town road.
Is it Bridge Road?
Yes, it is.
Bridge Street, Bridge Road is a town road.
It's a private road.
Town road.
Go ahead.
The other thing I wanted to clarify was, or actually asked you to clarify, with regards to the utility trenching. Do you say the utilities are all going to be overhead, so to the house, they're going to be overhead?
Yep, yes.
Is the requirement, is it being required to be underground?
You mean in a subdivision?
This is a subdivision. Whether there's a road or not, this is a subdivision.
Right, it is. The, all the utilities on Bridge Rock Road are overhead, and the only thing we're dealing with is electric and gas.
Yeah, so you should bring them, you should bring them to the house underground.
Well, John Kimball again. The, you know, I drive down Jockey Hollow and look at the four new houses that Steiner family just put in, and they all go overhead to those houses, which are also built on an existing road, so.
Yeah, that was subdivided years ago.
And I didn't review it.
It's not a current subdivision.
Because Will didn't review it, but the.
It wasn't, it wasn't subdivided under the current regulations.
Yeah, so the, the utilities are required to go underground for the subdivision, but there's, I don't think it's definitive that they're required to go, to be carried underground to the house lots on an existing road. I think that's an ambiguous area of the code, and we'd like the commission to, to not require it, because we'd end up having to install, the utilities are on the other side of the street, and we'd have to install additional phone poles or, you know, be cutting across the, the existing road in order to install the utilities. You know, I'm not, just not, you know, I, I understand in some respects why the town requires it for aesthetic reasons, but, you know, it, it hasn't, I mean, you know, the, because the utilities are already out in the street, they're already going to come, you know, it's, it's not like we don't see them and see how they come, you know, get to the house, you know, so that, because I don't think it's a hundred percent definitive that, that the commission allows us to leave them on overhead.
We, we have time to review that.
Thank you.
Keep it on the floor for now. All right, Mr. Carbone, let's see if we have any public comment. Does anyone here would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Carbone.
As I said, we are asking if this meeting be continued. The May second is fine. We will make all the revisions that we've outlined today. What comes in from other agencies, we will try to get onto the plans if at all possible. Again, Will's limiting the access to Bridge Road in one way or another is a good idea. We can cut that off in here and just take a utility easement across there if that's necessary. The other, we will now analyze the Bridge Road versus the standards, and I will provide a narrative for the open space. Have this in my next Wednesday to make the, or the Wednesday before the June second meeting.
May second.
May second meeting.
Yeah, so that would be next Wednesday.
I think that is, that is the Wednesday, right?
Yeah. Any other questions for anybody right now?
No.
All right, we'll continue this to May second. Thank you.